Can I have a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk Garcia requested to be excused from the five o'clock meeting. She will join us at the seven. I will do roll call in her place. Councilmember Damian?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia? Councilmember Hernandez?
Present.
Mayor Protam Avila?
Here.
And Mayor Estrada?
Here, and I believe Councilmember Garcia is actually setting up in her office, so she should be logging on shortly. So, thank you for that, Chief Deputy City Clerk. At this moment, we will move on to public communications. And so I will officially open up public communications. If anybody is looking to speak, now is the time. And then, did anybody call in, Chief Deputy City Clerk?
No, Mayor, not for the five o'clock.
Great, so looking that nobody is looking to speak, I will now close public communications. And we will move open, we will move over to our open session, and there's a city hall yard assessment presentation by our Director of Public Works, Sam.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. So, back in, at the meeting in August eighteen, twenty twenty-one, the city council directed staff to prepare a study to identify and better understand the many needs of the city maintenance yard. That study has been completed, including an associated rough order of magnitude cost of identified improvements. We prepared a brief presentation for you to report on the initial findings. So, I'd like to introduce our presenters, Mr. David Sloan, Director of Engineering, and Tim Vera, Architect, both with Tate and Associates, and Tim will be joining us via Zoom. And we also have Mr. John Boucher and Anthony Vazquez, Division Managers for the Public Works Department. David, over to yours.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present. We've been tasked with taking a look at the city's public works yard improvement goals, and really categorizing them, and coming up with an approach, and summarizing some of the key tasks. And so my goal for today is to walk you through what our findings have been. If we can switch to the next slide and then do four additional clicks to get the material on the page. Before we dive into what we recommend, it's always good to know where you've come from. In this site, effectively, this is actually a Caltrans site, nineteen sixties is when it was built. The city took over that site in nineteen seventy-eight, built a garage, a warehouse, fuel islands. And then from seventy-eight, nothing really has happened on that site except for incidental improvements. And then in twenty seventeen, you had solar panels added. So, that's really the site that we have, which is a nineteen seventy-eight site, but you have operations that are from the twenty twenties now. And so we're looking to find out what those improvements are. Previous studies have indicated a two and a half million dollar budget. If you can click one more time for me on this. Of that two and a half million dollars, three hundred thousand dollars had been previously allocated for design, two hundred thousand dollars reserved for constriction contingency, which leaves you with a two million dollar construction budget. And so we're looking at that two million dollars. How can we take the city's budget and maximize that? So, I'm going to take you through the categories of work here. If we can go to the next slide. What we did was we broke down your categories of work into two main categories, building improvements and site improvements. And then from their eight subcategories that I'm going to walk you through individually today, there are so many items in each of these that we would spend a whole presentation on each one. So, you'll have to forgive me for the low detail of pictures. There are so many pictures out there of items that need improvement. So, we've gotten some representative items here. But effectively, we're looking at structural improvements, about a million dollars. Operational improvements for the site is a hundred thousand. Moving on to the site, a hundred and forty thousand dollars of generator work, sixty thousand dollars for an EV station, four hundred thousand for your CNG facility, three fifty for fueling station, a hundred thousand for the site storage, and lastly, two hundred thousand dollars for a parking lot, coming out to a total construction cost of two point three five million. That's above the two million initial estimate, but the goal here is to start categorizing the work and then bidding them out in a way to maximize your benefit. If you can go to the next slide, and then go ahead and click three times for me. What we're going to start off was looking at your building improvements, and specifically, your structural improvements inside the building. The main goal here is to create an open concept to maximize your space. We're doing that by getting rid of non-load-bearing walls, items that are creating constrictions in the building, and opening up the area. One of the big areas you'll see is at the bottom right, the break room, the meeting and training room are combined with removable dividers. Additionally, a huge improvement is in the locker room, the restrooms, where we've combined those areas to maximize your space usage, and then taken these logical office spaces. This allows us to create supervisor spaces, division lead spaces, and then access to computers for each of the people. So, a tremendous amount of potential here. The cost for that was six hundred thousand dollars. If you can click one more time for me. Moving on to the, what we're calling the annex buildings. Effectively, those two blue highlighted areas on the screen is where there's a tremendous amount of storage being done for different public works divisions. We have a lot of opportunity for optimizing those areas primarily by getting palletized shelving, getting good shelving in there to get better use of space. Additionally, we're looking to add roll-up doors for better access in and out, so material can be brought in safely. And then finally, insulation ventilation for those areas. A key critical component of this also is the fact that the city clerk and the building department need to have storage for their records. The top box on your screen, about half of that, is currently being conceptualized to be used for your material, I'm sorry, your document storage. And that's really an important part of the city's function to make sure that you have the space for your records, and that can be relatively easily incorporated into these buildings. But that's this annex work. We have a hundred thousand dollars allocated for that. If you can click again for me, and then one more click. I'm sorry, if you can go back one. Next is the garage. Oh, click once, and one more. Thank you. For the garage, ultimately in the garage, the main improvements we're looking to do here is elevated storage, again, to optimize the space, to give the workers the necessary space to work. The roof does need replacement, and finally, adding some plumbing for undercarriage. That's at a hundred thousand dollars for your building improvements. Continuing on to the next slide, and then one additional click. Due to the fact that these buildings were built prior to the seventies, there is an extremely high, if not almost for sure likelihood that there's asbestos, lead paint within the structure. As it stands, it's not a health, but construction work causes that. And so what we're looking to do is get that remediated. We've allocated ten thousand dollars for asbestos study, twenty thousand dollars to have that work remediated, and it's very important that it be done once improvements are done here. If we can click to the next slide and do one more click. Then, as you get into the building improvements, accessibility improvements will be paramount. As part of your accessibility, we first recommend that the city does engage a CASP report. This is recommended to get you your liability coverage, to make sure that that has been documented on what the improvement needs are. And then based on what improvements get authorized, incorporate those components into your project. But really, the main area that you're going to see a huge benefit here is getting your restrooms, getting the locker rooms, getting the showers, all up to accessible codes, and then your circulation and your access into the building. And that's something where we've allocated forty thousand dollars for that. If you can move on to the next slide, and then do one additional click. Next item is the HVAC system. The HVAC system does need to be replaced within the building. Effectively, this hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget does include the cost for upgrading, repairing, replacing the elements, potentially even incorporating a heat sink or other items to help maximize the benefit to the site. However, it's important that this be budgeted for the site to make sure that the improvements are incorporated with functional HVAC systems for climate control. Continuing on, and then one more click for me. And then lastly, the really, the finishing touch of this is to do your FFE, which is fixtures, furnitures, and equipment for the site. As you do your building improvements, to get that additional desks, the chairs, the elements needed, computers, the city needs to incorporate an asset management system that would be included in this cost, potential telecom system upgrades. And ultimately, what's going to happen is the replacement of the space inside the building, the replacement of the furniture is going to create a completely different environment, which ultimately does have an impact on morale as well as worker health. And so there's all these auxiliary benefits that are going to be incorporated by this project. And that's the last one hundred thousand dollars of the building improvements. So, if we can move on to the next slide and click one more time, we'll move on to the site improvements. One of your most critical site improvements from a safety standpoint is your generators. The site currently has two generators, one located at that circle in the middle of your site, and one located at the top of the site. The generator at the top of site is currently not functioning. The generator at the middle of the site is functioning, however, it's past its design and service life. We're recommending that both of those generators be replaced in order to get the city back on track, because if there are emergencies, this is what's providing power, and without the power, you can't provide the services. And so that would be an essential item for a hundred forty thousand dollars. Next following item. For this, EV stations are also recommended for the site. The incorporation of the EVC system will allow you to help accomplish your AQMD goals for air quality. Additionally, installing these will help you capitalize on the fact that you have solar panels onsite that are providing power to the EV stations, and really doubling down on that benefit. And so this is an item that's incorporated for sixty thousand. If we can continue on, and give me one more click on this. The fueling station, there's a number of problems currently with the site for the fueling station. Primarily, every time it rains, fuel systems are set up with a trigger where if water gets into that manhole, it'll shut down the system. So, one of the items that we're going to be doing is doing a grading to make sure that the water appropriately drains away from the manholes, doesn't concentrate to shut down your fuel pumps. Secondly, the fuel pump system, as well as the grading around it, needs to be replaced, and so the islands will be replaced. And lastly, there's a problem for the site where large vehicles cannot fit under the canopy. In situations like this, it's possible to retrofit those canopy, effectively to raise it up while using the same canopy, and getting those larger vehicles in there being able to fuel. And so those are the three hundred fifty thousand dollars included here. If we can move on to the next slide and give me one more click. For the CNG station, currently, the site does have CNG equipment, however, they're non-functional. You'll see here, the four hundred thousand dollars has an asterisk. The reason it has an asterisk is the cost of improvements is actually six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, there is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that the city can obtain. So, the effective cost of getting your CNG system back up and running ends up being a four hundred thousand dollar cost, which again helps you accomplish your AQMD goals and continue to move towards that environmental efficiency. If you can continue on to the next slide, give me just one click. So, on this one, for site storage, this is another huge area where, if you look at the site, it's very congested. Parking, equipment, storage, and this is where adding a palletized system that is going to be able to lift off the ground storage elements and put containers that are logically grouped is going to free up state space within the building, and also free up space for parking. And so the intent is to effectively, you'll see there's two blocks, blue blocks on the screen. Use a palletized system in those areas and park vehicles under them. Right now, the site has seventy-five vehicles that are coming in and out, only sixty-one parking stalls. By doing this and some other efficiency items, we can at least get enough parking onsite for those vehicles. The additional items that are very important from a function, the police department's mobile operations center is currently within the yard, and it is severely impacting the vehicular traffic, as well as the access to the material hoppers. And so it will be important that a functional and a more viable space for that be presented in the future, so that we can actually free up the space within the yard. But that's one of the big goals, to create more of a functional circulation. If you can click one more time for me. This is ultimately what the final layout would end up being with that mobile unit gone. We can extend some parking. We can still have a full rule of parking on the bottom edge by putting the storage above the vehicles and logically putting it, and adding a couple more parking stalls in that fuel storage, fuel island area to the left. So, you can see here that there's a lot of potential for optimizing, but it's going to take careful planning on these other tasks. And then the last item, if you can click one more time for me, is the parking lot. The pavement on the site is completely degraded. Effectively, it's in a failed condition. Anytime you see that alligator pattern on pavement, effectively, it's gone, and it's a matter of how you can most cost effectively rehabilitate it. Public works yards do have the option to do alternate pavement technologies. Problem with those is that you end up spending more time curing them, and usually, yards want to be open right away. So, we, you can work, but essentially, we've allocated about two hundred thousand dollars to allow the city to rehabilitate your pavement. Also, one of the big desires is to widen the driveway, just the driveway apron entering the site, so that larger vehicles can have a better turning movement into the site and not have as much conflict. So, that's where the two hundred thousand dollars is brought in. And ultimately, if you can click one more time for me. This is where your total budget ends up being. Right now, including the three hundred thousand dollars of design costs and the construction costs, we've estimated a budget of two point eight five million dollars. Now, if you can click one more time, at this point, the request is that the three hundred thousand dollars for design be authorized so that the remaining items can be appropriately designed, vetted. And then what, one of the most effective ways to bid these types of items is with alternate bid items. What we recommend is incorporating more project than you believe you can afford, because you don't know where your bids are going to come, and effectively allowing those to cascade onto each other and authorizing the amount that you can afford. But this really helps put a little bit more detail to the work that you're doing, and then giving you more confidence for moving forward. That concludes our presentation, and I can open up the floor to any questions.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protam.
Thank you for that presentation, and I agree with you. There wasn't enough pictures to show what the place actually looks like. I've actually done a tour of the facility inside and out, and I agree that it is not a place where you want to come to work and pick up your morale, at least not the site. I went inside the facility, and I definitely agree that it needs to be redone completely. It's dirty, it's ugly, it's old, it smells old, and it's not safe for, for our staff. You said the roof needs replacement. That's part of the cost?
Yes.
With replacing the roof? Well, you saw the bucket. Can you tell me what that bucket was for?
You know what? Tim is on the line, the architect. They all did the field walk inside the buildings. Tim, did you see the bucket? Or I'll open up the floor.
That blue container. What was that for there, inside one of the offices, in front of a desk? Was that a rain catcher?
Actually, I don't know which bucket you're referring to.
It was a blue container. It kind of looks like the old recycle little bins.
Yeah, it might have been one of the recyclable containers in the offices, you know, but if I could see the picture, maybe I could.
Do you use containers to catch rain sometimes? Let, let that be my question. Do you use sometimes any buckets and containers to?
In the garage, in the fleet, we, we have.
Okay, and then is that a refrigerator on top of a desk?
Yes.
And what area is this that I'm looking at?
That is the graffiti office.
And where does anybody do their work in there?
Opposite that refrigerator is a desk where the lead sits. Along that wall, there's three, a total of three desks where the lead and his staff would do the paperwork for the.
And that's completely unacceptable, because how could you work in an environment like that? So, not just, and I know some may say, well, move things around and clean them around, but there's nowhere to move things around, first of all, because everything is, is crowded and there's no space. I agree that we need to create space above, not in that particular area, but so that we can store the items that need to be stored. After I saw and I visited the facility, I was, I was, honestly, I was shocked. I know you guys had mentioned that it needed work, and it needed this and that, and I thought, oh, how much work can it really need? Boy, was I surprised. It needs a lot of work, inside and out. The fact that the water runs inside and shuts off your pumps, that's not good. So, I mean, luckily, we haven't had any rain, but we did have a year that we had a lot of rain. What did you do to get, be able to get fuel since they were shut down?
Well, during that time, we, we prepare, we put a plastic sheeting over the manhole, we put sandbags, and at times, we'll even put an EZ up, and we're trying to just, you know, reduce the amount of water that goes into that manhole. And then the following day, one of the fleet mechanics will get a wetted dry vac and vacuum out the, the water from that manhole, and then let it air dry.
So, you improvised, which you did a good job, I'm sure, but that shouldn't have to be necessary. The computer space, you said part of that budget included furniture and computers as well, or just the furniture?
Correct. The intention is to have that a hundred thousand dollar budget to cover your FFE needs, so that would be the furniture fixtures and equipment.
Okay, that's perfect, because I really didn't see a lot of spaces where people can come in and have a nice place to actually do their work, as you saw in that picture. The storage above the vehicles in the parking lot area, how would that work? And would it be a liability of that collapsing on top of any of the cars?
Yeah, so the storage above the vehicles, there's a number of systems. One type of system is a manual system where it's palletized, so you would end up having a forklift bring things out. There's also hydraulic systems where they cost more, but effectively, if you pull the vehicle out, they're able to lower themselves down for direct access. And so it would be an equation of cost, however, those palletized systems would all be rated for the weight and the equipment that's placed up there. So, it wouldn't be a problem of it falling, because they're designed for those purposes.
And so, of course, to move things in and out, we would make sure there's no vehicles at the time.
Absolutely.
Okay, that was a concern with that. And the CNG, it's non-functional. What do we use that for? The CNG station?
So, CNG is for fueling natural vehicles.
How many natural vehicles do we have right now?
I'm, I'm not familiar with the system itself, other than it's one of the functions of the city's vehicles. Is anybody else able to speak to the CNG?
Yeah, so we currently have two sweepers, our primary sweeper and our backup sweeper are CNG. And I want to say we have at least a dozen CNG vehicles that we would, we would use this station for.
And where do you charge them now?
Waste management.
You go to waste management, and how far is that from here? Is it the one on Live Oak, or?
Yes.
And how much does that cost?
I don't know the exact number, but it's quite expensive.
So, if you can get, get us the numbers, so we could see the cost savings of us having to go. I know initially, it'll be a cost to replace that, but in time, that money will come back to us, because we won't be having to pay for, for us to go to a waste management. Do you know if that's paid on a monthly basis, or how we pay for that, or based on the number of vehicles we take?
Yeah, it's based on consumption, you know, however gallons we consume and fill up. I know that the initial P O we opened up this year was ten thousand dollars, and I believe we have exhausted that amount since July first.
Oh.
So, we do, like, the sweeper runs all day, you know, ten hours a day. You know, plus, I know other vehicles, staff, you know, they use it, you know, go to and from across the city, and it runs almost all day long. So, we do consume quite a bit.
Okay, perfect. And I'm, I was happy to hear that we could get grants to be able to lower the cost of the CNG plant. Those were all my comments, but I do agree that it's in dire need of getting not just a little facelift, but a complete, a complete do-over, because it is in very bad shape. It's, I don't think it's good for our employees to come into, to their place of work, their offices, their lunchrooms, the way it looks. That's why, maybe next time, you can put actual pictures of what the lunchroom really looks like, what your offices really look like, like a complete picture, so people can get a better idea. Where you go to work every day, you come from your comfortable home to, to where you spend most of your day, and I think you should be able to work comfortably, to be able to sit down and have your lunch and relax, and know that when you need to access your CNG or store anything, that it is safe for you to do so, and that you're not going to have any problems, so that you can go about your day without having to worry about other things. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Mayor Protam. Is there anybody else looking to comment?
Yeah, Mayor, I just have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Damian.
Within the FFE, will internet access also be addressed within the improvements?
Tim, would you be able to speak to the current budget that we have on the FFE? I know that it is budgetary, however, I want to, I think you can speak better to those figures.
I, can you hear me, David?
Yeah.
I don't believe that we specifically addressed that. It would be a matter of looking at the city's current Wi-Fi service and things like that, and seeing how viable they are, or need up, look at additional upgrade.
Okay, yeah, because I, I also went, I know when we first heard about the numbers, it was like, whoa, it's a lot of money. But once you tour the facility, you, you see how desperately needed these improvements need to be made at the public works yard. But I know that one of the complaints that we get as well, apart from everything else that needs to be improved, is the internet access and how, how fast they can get, you know, emails and stuff like that either received or sent out. So, maybe that should be something also that we should look into when budgeting for the FFE, just to make sure that, you know, their internet is up to, to the speed, so that they're able to, to, to provide, you know, timely communication with, within the city emails. That was the only concern that I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Sam, just out of curiosity, how much potential for expansion or additional vehicles do we have on the site, you know, once we do all these remodels?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. So, so right now, we, we don't have enough space for the vehicles that were already serviced on the site. We're trying to create space for those. We have about seventy-five vehicles that go in and out, and we only have sixty-one spaces available. So, the plan right now is to create an additional ten, fifteen spaces, I don't know exactly, so that we can fully be able to service all of the vehicles at the site.
Perfect. And for the electric vehicle station, is it just two vehicles that we can charge at, at a time, or is it for four vehicles at a time?
Are, are you talking about the EV station?
Yeah, the EV station. It was hard to tell by the picture.
Yeah, so we are looking into anywhere between two and four stations, and we want it to be the supercharging type, so that we can charge more than one vehicle per day, or, or per hour. I think right now, the slow chargers are four hours, and we can get that down to under an hour. And we'll be able to charge more vehicles as we transition our fleet to an electrical fleet.
Right, and so, perfect. So, just for clarification, these are the superchargers, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I do want to let the council know that we do have a staff report and consent with, as David mentioned, the recommendation to allow us to move into the design phase, which is only three hundred thousand at this time.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Great, and at this moment, we will recess to closed session.
Paul and Monica joined by Zoom.
Paul, that's right. Okay, so I'll wait till they join, and then I'll make you host and let myself out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
There's Paul. Which actually, Danny, I'll ask you, if you're comfortable admitting new people into the room, I could make you host now and let myself out. You could just admit Monica when she joins.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait for Monica, and I'll let her in.
Okay, then I'll just make you host now, and then I'll let myself out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, make host.
We'll see you later. Hopefully, we don't have to come back into closed session.
That's more a problem for Mark than it is me. I hit, I, I hit the garage pretty quick after that. Okay, you're host now. I'll see you guys at seven.
All right, David. Thank you.
Yep, see you.
Wailing all that power, Councilmember. Look at that.
They make me the host now. I'm screwed. I can't move from here.
Oh, sorry. I learned a long time ago not to be the host before exactly that reason. You're stuck till the.
I had to be the first one to join, yeah.
I did that for one, for something a few years back, and I didn't know that it was supposed to be an hour meeting, and, well, I got stuck. I did that for one, for something a few years back, and I didn't know that it was supposed to be an hour meeting, and, well, I got stuck. I just left the computer going. I just left. I'm like, I had, I'm like, I had to go to, I had to go to offsite meeting, so I'm like, okay, bye.
Yeah, I'm going to start logging in a couple minutes late now.
Well, I, I'm a bloodlight man, so technology and me just don't work, don't work together, man. Sorry. That's my excuse.